I am Vanessa Shrikantham. I am the chairperson for Together for Little Miami. We just took care of the room rental. There's a fee when you rent it from the district. When you rent from the district, you also have insurance. We took care of that. And just for everyone's safety, we also took care of making sure that there's a Hamilton Township Police Officer here on site. And we also took care of the fee related to that. After I'm done speaking here, our role is kind of done. We have our two, two of our four board candidates are here. All four board candidates were invited to tonight's event. But here with us, we have Bobby Grace and David Whiting. Mandy Bullock and Dan Smith elected not to attend. We have our moderators here. We have Mr. Justin King. He will be introducing himself a little bit more later, but he is on our Hamilton Township Zoning Committee. And we have Ms. Sheila Bopp, who is here. She lives in Heritage Miami Bluffs and has helped them facilitate their candidate event for many years. You will find a post-it note, or not a post-it note, an index card in front of you. You have until seven o'clock if you, while they're answering the questions that we've prepared for them. If you think of any follow-up questions or additional questions that you would like to ask at seven o'clock, we'll just kind of have a volunteer standing here, just motioning off-camera a little bit. You can pass those to the side. We'll go through those and then we'll see how many of those questions we can get through with the candidates in addition to the questions that are already lined up for them. Like I said, we do have a Hamilton Township Police Officer here. We're just asking everyone to make this a very civil event. We're here to learn more about the candidates and where they stand on the issues. This is a private event. We are renting this from the school district. This is not considered a public meeting. So if there is anyone who gets too unruly, we will be asking you to leave. And I hope that's not the case, Wes. I really think we need to have a wonderful evening here. Without any further ado, we'll have about three minutes for the candidates to answer each question. There are some questions that they'll both answer. There are a couple of questions that are candidate-specific. But for now, I will turn it over to our moderators. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Justin King. Honored to serve here as one of the moderators tonight for Meet the Candidates for the Little Miami School Board. I've been a proud resident of Hamilton Township for the past 16 years, currently serving at the Township Zoning Commission. Professionally, I've spent my career involved with working in real estate and operational leadership through the corporate and nonprofit sectors there. I'm also an avid, active community volunteer.
My name is Sheila Bopp. I have lived in Hamilton Township for 21 years now. Unfortunately, I don't have any children or grandchildren in the system. They've all outgrown that. For 30 years, I worked for Hamilton County Job and Family Services, primarily in the contract management, the business end of the agency. That's all. The first question is for each of you. What inspired you to run for the school board?
Well, mine's kind of a funny little tale. I was having a yard sale and some teachers stopped by to peruse what I was selling. And they came up to me and they said, "You know, since you're an educator, we think you would make a good school board member." I never thought about it. And so I put my name in. And the first time I ran, I messed up my petition. So I did a write-in. And I was told that, you know, you'll never get this. And I didn't, but I did, I did get my name out there. So the next time I ran, I was elected. And I figure like, I've been elected like seven times now, so I must be doing something right, I hope. So that's my tale.
I've been married to my wonderful wife for 47 years. And we were in the Navy when we first got married. And one of the things that was her objective was she wanted to, when we finally settled down, she wanted to get her teaching certificate so she could begin teaching. So as you can imagine, with three young children and her going to school and us, you know, raising a family and doing the other things we needed to do, when she was taking classes, sometimes it felt like I was taking classes as well. And so I learned an awful lot about the education process and certainly the learning that she had. And I found it very intriguing and very interesting. I was actually working in the nuclear power industry, training adults how to operate nuclear power plants. So I've always been involved in the instruction and the training of people. And so this was an extension of that, but obviously with very much younger adults than the adults that I was used to. So with that process, in 1994, we moved here and Carrie's taught here in the Little Miami School District and taught some of the gifted children in the various age groups. And she would come home after the end of a day, and any spouse of an educator will know that when they come home after the end of a teaching day and they say, "This really didn't go very well today," or "This went really well today," or whatever it was, I began to learn some of those things. And what occurred to me was, well, I think I could help with something like that. You know, when she comes home with a problem, I can say, "I think I'd have an idea that might help that." And then a different problem would come on a different day and say, "Well, I think I can help with that." So I decided to join on with the Business Advisory Council to try to find a way to help. And in that process of helping, I found that ideas were accepted. And then the natural progression for that is to be able to say, you know, maybe I can help on the school board as well. And so that's kind of the long story for the school board side.
So I guess with the experience, what unique perspectives or experiences will you bring to the school board? If you can, share some experiences.
Well, I'm not only on the school board, I'm on like about seven other boards. So I feel like I get a lot of experience. I'm on the Sinclair Foundation Board. I'm on the, in fact, I started a foundation with another friend. It's called the Jewel Education Foundation. And we give a $1,000 scholarship to every school district in Warren County except Mason. So we started that foundation to help. I also was on the Chamber Board for a long time. And we started a scholarship fund there for a senior at Little Miami. So I bring a lot of different areas of expertise to boardmanship. I like to listen and I hear what you say. I like to solve problems. I was on the very beginning of the Business Advisory Council. We helped start that, so that's one of the things that we did. I feel like Little Miami is a great district, but you know, we still have room to improve. But I feel like I bring, since I'm on different boards, I bring a different perspective. And, but I think listening is one of the most important things that we can do as a board member.
All of my professional career has been involved in a leadership role of some sort. I have been responsible for human resources, for engineering projects, as a project manager, working with some international companies, helping them implement technology and implement changes that they needed to have within their businesses and within their companies. And one of the things that I've found out of all of that is the fact that the leadership qualities that are needed in order to try to bring different points of view together require listening, as Bobby said, that's a very important characteristic. But being able to bring the different ideas together and meld them into an action plan or a solution that everyone agrees on and can work forward with. And that's, I'm finding through observation that that's not necessarily a common trait that we would, as we would like it to be, certainly in our leadership. You don't have to look very far in politics before you find people that are not necessarily well-suited for that kind of leadership. So I think that that kind of experience, I mean, I've negotiated union contracts. If you ever want to have some good fun, go try to negotiate union contracts with the U.S. Postal Workers. I mean, it's not necessarily a fun activity, but successful nonetheless. I mean, because at the end of the day, just like within our schools, failure is just not an option. And in our schools, failure is not an option. So we have to find ways forward. We have to find solutions that will work. And I think some of our questions may get to this a little later, but the interesting challenge is not about what we know of today, because those solutions are pretty easy, because most people have already got the ideas about today's problems. The problems that we really need to focus on are the problems into the future. You know, what's the next 10, 20 years going to look like? What are the problems that, you know, your children's children are going to have to face? You know, those are the kinds of things that we need to start thinking about. And that's what, having that vision is what I'm encouraged about and want to try to contribute to the board.
In your, in your view, what are the most important responsibilities of a school board member?
Well, the two main things of board members' responsibility is to hire the superintendent and the treasurer and to evaluate them. It's also to make policy. Those are the two main things that we are supposed to be doing. Not to involve ourselves in the day-to-day running of the school. That's not our job. That's why we have a superintendent. That's why we have principals. But we also need to coordinate with the superintendent and discuss, you know, what we need to do, what's going on, what do we want to do for the future. Curriculum is very important. That's not our job, but it is our job to oversee what's being taught, follow us what we have as a curriculum.
I would certainly agree that, and I would just add one more, and I know Bobby agrees with this as well, is that the, the role of being the liaison between the community and the schools is very critical for the board as well. You know, I think we could, we could probably look in the past and see some times when that communication breakdown has occurred and there's suspect of things not being either on the up and up, or things not being totally forthright, or what have you. I'll tell you from personal testimony, that's usually just a perception. It's hardly ever really true. But I think that being, working hard to make sure the community knows what's going on, how the decisions are being made, I think that's a very important part as well. And yes, we do have the administrative responsibilities associated with hiring and managing the primary officers within the school district, the treasurer and the school superintendent. And those are very critical, and we need to make sure that those are being done well. But I also think it's really important, and I know Bobby and I have talked about this in the past, and she agrees, that it's a very important part that we have open communications, the listening and the ability to have good messaging. And to be fair with what's occurred over the past, when you look at some of the messaging that the school district has been trying to do now, they're really quite good. I mean, we've got this, these events and our board meetings now being put over cable TV, which is something we haven't had in the past. I mean, it's a great opportunity for people to, to see what's happening and how the board is working. The flyers that are going out and some of the other things that are taking place to help communicate. There's a new app on your phone, by the way. If you haven't seen, a lot of information, if you have students in a particular school, you can focus it just on that particular school. So some very good things are there. And I think the board supporting those kinds of activities, I think, is a very critical part of the role of the board as well.
So how do you see your role in shaping the future of the district?
Would you repeat that?
So how do you see your role in shaping the district's future?
I'll let you answer first.
You're doing such a good job.
I'll let you go first.
Okay. I think the responsibility that we have as board members is to, to be visionary. I know when working in the Business Advisory Council, one of the things that we do is we bring people from different business backgrounds together and we talk about whatever issues they happen to be. And we've talked about funding issues. We've talked about the school use issues, you know, can we, can we use different buildings in different ways? We've talked about the issue of expansion that may need to occur with needing more property or having less property, or whatever it is that needs to be done. But that takes a certain amount of visionary approach. And I think that that's one of the things that I see that I can bring to the board is that experience, not only through the Business Advisory Council, but also the need, I mean, there's nothing more challenging when you're sitting in a board meeting of a professional company, a large international company, and the CEO looks over to you and say, "What do you think?" And all of a sudden, you're on the hook to be able to say, "Well, you're in charge of that department, so what do you think your department needs to do?" And visionary being, having a vision for what the future needs to be, I think, is a very important part of that. And that's, in probably less dramatic ways, but certainly no less important ways, that's one of the things that I think the board needs to do and to have, is that sense of vision of looking, instead of focusing on the fires that are happening today, focusing on those things that are in the future.
I would like to give an example of something that we did this year that has helped us help kids. And one of the things that we did was we started the Panther Academy. These were kids that were going to an alternative school. They weren't bad kids. They just didn't do well in a regular classroom. We have a classroom now where we've got a guy who is phenomenal with these kids. He takes them out. He's, he's teaching them about workforce. He's teaching them about what it's going to be like when you get out of the school. And kids don't think about that. I also feel like we have to look as board members, how are we going to handle AI in our classrooms? How are we going to handle, you know, are the kids, what kind of rules are we going to make for AI? And what are we going to do? How are we going to look into the future? What's going to happen five years down the road? Are schools going to look the same? I don't think so. I think there's going to be a big change coming. And I think as board members, we have to think about that. I just really feel like we've got good administrators. We've got people with their heads on straight. And we're thinking, we're talking and we're listening to what businesses say. I am on the Career Center Board, and they're working with businesses right now, and they don't have enough people. And so that's one of another, another thing, you know, we've always stressed college. And college is good. My kids went to college. But college isn't for everybody. So that's another thing that we need to stress, you know, what are you going to do when you get out of here? So as a board, we have to look at that and say, "How are we going to prepare these kids for the future?" Well, that's the first time I got that one.
What are the top two or three priorities you believe the district should focus on over the next four years?
All right. Money. The state keeps cutting our money. So how are we going to fund that? Population, we keep growing. How are we going to do that? We need, we're going to have to have buildings to house these, these children. That's two of them. I also think keeping good people and keeping good teachers. You know, they say we have a teacher shortage, but I keep reading, there are a lot of teachers out there. It's just been so overwhelming for them, they don't want to teach anymore. So we have got to provide an area for teachers to want to come to work, want to be able to teach. And that's what we're, we're working on.
I think a lot has been said in the past about the over-importance of what you might call the social influences on our schools. I think there, it's a very critical part of something we need to look at. But it is also a fire that's burning today, because the social impact of five years from now is going to be very different, because we don't know what's going to happen to, you know, the technology, to cell phones. We don't know what that is. Yes, we do have to address it in terms of today's environment, but it's not necessarily something that's going to be a burning issue necessarily in the future. So I think the, I would agree with Bobby that if there were three priorities, and I was writing them down as she was saying them in a different order, but growth has got to be number one. I mean, we have, the growth was, do some quick math. Grade four this year is going to have 500 students. 500 students in one grade. Now, take that number, multiply times 12, because we got 12 grades. Add kindergarten, add preschool, we got a problem. It's already here. So that's only going to get more complex as we go forward. And so the growth issue, you know, where are we going to put the students? How are we going to hire enough people and retain the right people that are needed within, within the teaching, within the schools, administrators and teachers both? And then, of course, the big elephant in the room, which is funding. Something's got to happen with funding. We don't know what it's going to be, but something has got to occur with funding. Because right now, we're relying solely on the backs of real estate property values, which is only part of the population. You know, so we've got to view a, a funding model. And of course, part of the unknown of this is we don't know what, what the State House is going to let us do. And so it's, it's a wild card, but it's a real challenge that I think we're going to have to address and face as the future unfolds.
Okay. So you kind of touched on that with this, with that question, but going into supporting teachers and staff. Teachers and staff are at the heart of our schools. What steps would you take to ensure they feel supported, motivated, and valued?
Well, I think letting them know that, you know, the board supports them, we, we're behind them, going to things that they have. I, I attend a lot of things that I'm invited to by teachers. Being visible, being out there to all the things that are going on. There's something going on at Little Miami all the time. If you look on that little website that he was talking about, the little app, there, you can scroll down and there's something every night. Well, we can't go to everything, but we, we pick and choose. I've gone to sports things. I've, I've supported the, I've supported the band. I've supported the choir. I just, I think if they see us at different things and they know that we support them, having something special for the teachers, that's one of the things that we can do. Show them that we appreciate them. Being a teacher myself, it doesn't have to be a money thing. It can be a note in their, in their mailbox, or it can be just saying to them, "Hey, I appreciate what you're doing." Or, "I heard about this. Really, kudos to you for doing something special with your kids." It does not have to be a money thing, but also, you know, we can take them, you know, to each school. We used to, I don't, we haven't done it for a while. We would take donuts on Teacher Appreciation Day. So I've taken donuts to the bus garage one time. It's different things that you can do to show that you really appreciate the people and that, you know, we all want to be appreciated. And it doesn't have to be anything really great, big.
Coming from my HR background, I have to think in terms of benefits and competition. We're in a very competitive market in this geography down here in southwest Ohio. And our teachers have lots of options within driving distance. And so we have to make sure that our benefits package and what we're willing to pay them and the experience levels that we're required to get are sufficient to attract the kind of talent that we need. Now, there's, there's several different ways this could be done. You can, you can start off by making arrangements with colleges to be able to provide internships and, and transitions into the workforce for a period of time. Difficulty with that, of course, is you lose your experience, because they're going to go and off to some other more attractive role or attractive job somewhere. You can pay the big money and you can get the people that have all the experience and all the, the things that you would need to be able to be totally self-sufficient. But if you have a whole cadre of them, then obviously then you've got budget issues and you've got constraints. So it's, it's about a mix of making sure that you've got the right talent, the right experience level, and you're paying the right benefits to be able to make sure that the, because at the end of the day, we all have lives we have to live as well. I mean, yes, the teachers are very dedicated to the classrooms, they're dedicated to their students, but they have to live and they have to be able to make it worth their while as well, so.
Yeah, they have to pay bills.
And they got to pay their own bills, yeah.
Can you share a strategy or initiative you would champion to improve staff morale and retention?
Well, one, this is something that we don't do, but something that the county does, our Area Progress Council, they have Project Excellence, where they pick a teacher, well, two teachers from each school district, and they honor them with money. And they give them a check for money that they can spend on their own. They give them a check for spending their classroom. They get a big dinner and they're honored in front of all their peers. So I feel like we've done something similar to that, not giving money, but we've had dinners for them at the end of the year. We've had, I know that the superintendent goes in and talks to each teacher every once in a while. As board members, we really aren't supposed to go into the classroom and do things, but we can support anything that the superintendent and the treasurer, if we have money for it, do. So I feel like just letting them know, and again, we have to be visible. We have to be visible out there in, in the functions that they're doing. One of the things that, that I haven't done, that I want to do, is get a little more involved at the BTO. I think they do such wonderful things for the teachers. So that's one of the things, a priority that I would like to do a little more if I get re-elected. So I think that would be one of my goals. I, I just feel like, again, it doesn't have to be something really big to show that we support them. I just feel like, you know, being visible, letting them know that we appreciate that. I get on Facebook all the time and with the sports, I, you know, kids are doing this. I said, "Great." I always go, "Wahoo. Great, it's a great day to be a Panther." So I, you know, I do that with teachers. I get on social media and say, you know, "Great job." So I think as a board member, that's something that we can do.
Okay.
A specific initiative, I mean, I, having lived through many years of this, I think teachers end up spending an awful lot of their own money in order to accomplish what they feel like is the right thing to do within the class. I don't, I, I'm not sure what the initiative would look like. I'm not sure how that would be necessarily implemented. But I do think that there has to be a way that we can find a mechanism to make it less onerous to do what the teachers know is the right thing to do. If, and that's, and there's some, some work probably with the administrators, the local principals, and there, there are other staff to try to work out what, actually how that would be implemented and what it would look like. But I do think that that, that would, that a specific initiative to do something like that, I think, would be very helpful. If I can take the question and turn it on its head, specific initiatives that would not- its head, specific initiatives that would not be helpful is to go down a pathway where the board is viewed as some kind of an interventional policeman into the classrooms or into the teachers that makes an adversarial relationship between the teachers and the board. And, you know, it's, one of the, one of the reasons when you have the people who are the policymakers and the people who are the budget controllers, one of the reasons that, and it's come up in discussion in the past, that we don't necessarily wander through the buildings on our own about things because people get nervous when they show up because they don't want to create that adversarial relationship. So I think to turn that question around, one of the things we definitely don't want to do is we don't want to be viewed as policemen or the managers to try to control the teachers and force them to do something in accordance with a particular policy.
Okay. So, leading into that, school safety is a key concern. How would you work to ensure both physical safety and emotional well-being for students and staff?
Well, we have, we have hired mental health associates to help with our students. That's one of the things we have. We found out that after COVID, mental health is a big, big problem with our kids. And so one of the things that we've hired for all the buildings, people that come in and help with mental health. Also, we hired a safety person. So he has a safety plan. We also have, you know, all the teachers and everybody have a card that they can get in and out of the building with. So I think we've done a really very good job with our plan. Our safety guy, Joe, he goes through the plan, he talks to all the teachers, he's had meetings with all the teachers. This is what's going to happen, you know. And safety, you know, school shootings, it's out there. So we have a plan. There's a plan that, what to do if this happens. I remember when I was in school, you know, when there was a tornado, you'd get under a desk and hide. Wow, what good was that? Right? So we have a plan. It's, you know, he has meetings with all the teachers, with the administrators. They know what, the kids know what to do if something happens. You want to plan for the worst and hope for the best. But we have, you know, I feel like we have a good plan in place. I feel like we have good people here. And I'm pretty, you know, I'm not saying something bad would not happen, but I'm pretty confident that what we have in place will work. But you never know.
Emotional and mental health is something that our students are struggling with in lots of different things. And it shows up because of the technology and, you know, there's lots of pressures that they have to perform in their grades and things. What has just come across, just in the recent past, is, the recent here, is that my granddaughter is on the student council, and one of the things that she made as her platform was mental health. So it made me stop to think, maybe the students can actually deal with a lot of this stuff a lot better than maybe we adults can do because it's their thing. They're the ones that are experiencing it. Maybe we need to find a way to empower them to be able to deal with some of those things. I don't know what that looks like, but I think it's worth a dialogue to be able to support and bring that about. The physical safety of schools, do y'all remember when we put the portals on the schools? When you couldn't just walk in the school and then you had to go through a portal with a buzzer? And that was what, 10, 15 years ago? And it wasn't that long ago. I mean, I remember it. Maybe it's longer than that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, and we all thought, oh, this is going to be an end of the school. I can't believe we can't have access to it. I don't know what the next thing is going to look like. I don't know. But we have to be committed to make sure that whatever we're going to do, we're going to do it in a way that, that is going to be rolled out, you know, that protects our children without, and I agree that we don't want to, we don't want to turn them into fenced-in jails and, you know, have limits. I mean, that's not going to be very conducive to learning. That's certainly not, not necessarily going to be very helpful. But there are some interesting things that people are thinking about out in the industry that might be helpful, and we need to keep our minds open to those things. And if some ideas come along that we can try, you know, we need to consider them.
What is your perspective on emergency alert systems such as Raptor or something similar? And how should the district evaluate or implement such technologies?
I'm not personally familiar with Raptor as a, as a, as a brand in terms of emergency alert systems in general. You know, again, perhaps that might be one of those things that we can implement that would allow us to be able to bring about a stronger physical safety issue and notification issue. One of the interesting things about school safety in particular is, again, this is kind of like the mental health thing. It's not as much about the students as it is about the parents. Because the parents are going to be freaking out because their kids are in a school and inside the school, they may be perfectly safe and everything may be fine. It might be locked down and they may be okay, but you just don't know. As a parent, you don't know. And so that creates as much stress or more than actually what the students may be going through. So again, if there are systems out there, technologies out there that we can use to employ that can alert parents to be able to say, this is what's going on. College campuses have a very good way of notifying folks of what's going on. Their system, it's usually based on cellphone technology and it's based on texting, but they have records of everybody that's on their cellphone records. And when they need to send out a notification that says the campus is in lockdown, or this particular event is going on, or there's free pizza in this particular part of the building, they have a very good way of trying to do that. I'm not sure cellphone technology is as reliable as we would like it to be for these kinds of important things, but there may be some things that are out there that we can apply. So if that's what the Raptor is, then yeah, I would certainly endorse taking a look at it and trying to figure out whether or not it would apply for us.
And I'm not familiar with Raptor either, but I do know, we do have panic buttons here. We also, I was in a lockdown at the Career Center. I was giving a class for teachers. I was in a lockdown there. They brought in the dogs. As a person, I didn't know what to do because I was an outsider. So after that, they had a handbook in every room so that people would know. So I think, and one of the things I think that we need to rely on is our kids. Just like if somebody brings a gun to school, we have talked to our kids about, please report that, please report that. And they're doing that. They're doing things, the kids are doing things that are amazing. So we have a system in place. It can get better. It's going to change, just like with AI and just with like any kind of technology. It will change. It will get better. But, you know, we are doing what we can do and we're looking at everything that we can do. And if this Raptor is good, we'll look at it.
All right. Going over to finances and the levy. So with the levy on the ballot, what do you think voters should understand about the district's financial situation and its long-term needs?
All right. I am in full support of this levy. I will say that right now. It's a renewal. It has gone down just a little bit. Every, every time we put it up, it has gone down. One of the things about this levy right now, if we don't pass it now, we will lose the 12 and a half percent rollback. The state right now pays 12 and a half percent as a rollback. And we pay like 87 point something cents on a dollar. They pay 12 and something cents on a dollar. If we pass it now, we can have, keep that rollback for five years. The rollback goes away in January. So if we have to come back and ask for this levy again, which we will, because it's like 16 or 17% of our, our budget, we can't operate without this levy. So what, you know, what you need to think about is, do you want to save that 12 and a half percent? I do. I will vote for this levy for five years. It's the same amount it's always been. We get $10 million, $10.6 million. It's never going up. It's always the same. But you're, we started out with 13.969, and now it's like five point something. It has gone down. So it, to me, it's fiscally responsible to vote for this levy. It makes sense.
Yeah, I'm in support of the levy as well. It's the cheapest dollar for a levy you'll ever get because you're only paying 87 and a half percent cents on the dollar. So from that perspective, it represents a significant part of the budget. And there's talk about, you know, fear mongering of things that will have to go if we don't have 10, $10.6 million. I mean, it represents, our budget this year is a little over $60 million. It's going to be $70 million, I think, next year. So you take $10 million out of that, you do the math, you figure out, said, well, something's going to have to give if we didn't have that money coming in. And the fact that it is, is the cheapest dollar that we'll ever earn in terms of school income because it's only costing the taxpayers 87 and a half cents. The other thing that's unique about this, and Bobby and I have talked about this, and we're both committed to the fact that we want to work to try to find alternative fundings for, other than real estate taxes. There may be earnings taxes, there may be sales taxes, there may be other things we can do. We certainly need to work on trying to bring businesses into the area. There are a number of things that can be done as alternative forms of taxing. The nice part about this emergency levy that we have, if we don't need it, we don't have to collect it. If we can miraculously find a way to reduce $10.6 million out of the budget, then we can just simply stop collecting it. And we can stop collecting it next week if we had the money, or if we didn't need the money. So that's the nice part about this particular levy itself is it's the cheapest it'll ever be. It's also can be reduced to zero or any amount. Because imagine if we can find it as a balance between a different kind of income and this tax levy, and we reduce the amount we're taking in down to $3 million or $5 million. And then we can get the rest from someplace else. Or we find reductions in budget that can be done. All of those things have to be balanced in together. And we can, we can, just because we have it, we don't have to, we don't have to collect it. So I'm in favor of the budget or the levy for that reason.
If the levy does not pass, what steps would you support to address the district's financial challenges?
Well, we've been down this road before. We have to look at what, you know, what we could do without. I, that's, that's a hard thing. When we were under financial, when the state came over and took us over because we couldn't, we didn't have enough money and we hadn't passed a levy for ever, it was not a pretty sight. We cut teachers. We cut, we cut busing. We cut anything that you could be, specials, art, music, we cut because we didn't have money. And, you know, the state puts us between a rock and a hard place. They keep taking money away and we keep growing. And so how, how do we balance that? And now there's this thing about doing away with property tax altogether, but there is no plan for where that other money is going to come from. So, you know, we have got to do the best we can. I don't want to even think about this levy not passing. I think it's the smartest thing that any taxpayer and any voter can do is to vote for this levy because it makes sense. You know, you've got five, you will have five years with that rollback, that 12 and a half percent rollback that you don't have to pay. If we don't pass it, then when it comes around again, and you know we're going to have to ask again for a levy, then you'll have to pay the whole amount. So, and again, it's not the school's fault, it's the state's fault. It's the state's fault. I'm sorry. We have got to get our legislators on board with something besides property tax, something besides keep cutting public schools. And it's just, it's really scary right now. So.
The unfortunate reality, anytime any of us lose income from our businesses or our personal lives, we have to start taking a serious look at the things that we can do without. There are some things that the state mandates that we have to do. There are some requirements that we have to pay for, and we can't necessarily cut them out of the budget. The things that Bobby's talking about, interestingly enough, are the things that are optional that the state doesn't require. Even though we have 100 square miles of property that we bus and collect children from, busing is not required by the state. And so you start having to look at the realities of the things that you have to try to cut. And you can't cut, you know, we don't want to cut the academics because you can't because the state requires a certain amount of academics, a certain number of hours. They require the first aid, they require the nurses, they require certain things to be done, and you can't cut those. Those are not optional. So you end up having to cut the things that are what, in the state's mind are optional. In our minds, they're not optional because they affect the quality of our life. They affect the quality of the lives of the families that we're, we're trying to educate. So the unfortunate reality is you have to start looking at some of those things, and they will be painful. There's absolutely no doubt that they would be painful. Now, this particular tax levy renewal is, is not expiring for a year. So the pain of it, if it doesn't pass this time, won't be incurred for another year or so. And you have to start, you have to talk to Terry Gonda about the way the tax money is collected and how it's done in some years. And it gets very date confused. But, but the pain of it wouldn't start occurring for a year or so. But it's, unfortunately, we still, we still would have to start the process of either finding a replacement or beginning the process of, of cutting out things in the budget that we would, the state would call optional, which we would not want to call optional.
Okay. So this, this question is specific to Bobby here. During your tenure, the district's requested 12 levies and passed four, along with three bonds. How do you assess the district's financial management during this period? What could have done, what, what could have been done differently to strengthen the financial footing?
Well, first of all, let me go back for just a minute. And when we were under state control, they came in and it said, it wasn't our spending that was the problem. We were very financially well. We did well. It was the revenue because we couldn't pass levies. So I think one of the things that, that we need to do is, again, to find a different way of funding our schools. And again, that's hard. Right now, I taught at Goshen for 28 years, and they passed a 1% income tax, and they have never had to come back and ask for a levy again. And they have never had to come back and ask for a levy again. So I know that, I know King's right now is working on something which I like. They want to do an, an earnings tax, which would not, it would not tax any retirement. And they want to reduce the property tax so much mills. So, you know, if we could find some way to do that. What we really need, honestly, we need business. We need, we were talking and we need a, what, what did you call? An industrial park. We need an industrial park here. We need business to help, help us with this tax amount. If we had businesses, big businesses in here, what a relief that would be. But we're what, what's called a bedroom community where we have very little business. Business really supports a lot of schools. Look at Mason and, and look at Springboro. They're, that's amazing what they do with their, with the business taxes. But do you, do you know that we are one of the lowest amount of spending of any school district in, in Warren County? I think Springboro is the only one that's less than us. So we are financially responsible. I, you know, I don't think we do things that are crazy. And I think we watch our money. We, I, I go to Terri Gonda, our treasurer, all the time and say, hey, what's going on? What do we need to do? What, you know? So I think we are responsible. There are some things that we probably could do, looking for another stream of money. But again, the state, it seems like it's like against us. All schools right now, public schools are under attack right now. If you don't believe it, you just think, you just listen to the voucher program.
This one is for David. Excuse me. As a community member, business advisory council member, parent, grandparent and spouse of a retired teacher, what changes or improvements would you suggest regarding district finances?
Well, I think we've, we've covered a lot of the ideas in terms of, of changes that potentially could be there. I, I think the perception that we're under the thumb of whatever the Ohio State House says we can do is a very real reality that we have to deal with. For years, when costs were relatively low and real estate taxes worked out quite well. I mean, it's, we haven't had, I, I think this, this emergency levy that we have now was done in two, originally fourteen years ago. And I think prior to that, you have to go back somewhere in the nineties before you find a tax levy that this district has had because the real estate taxes have worked. The problem now, of course, is the county has come back and said, all of your property is now thirty percent more valuable than it was last year. And our eyes are all going like, that's crazy, you know? And so that causes the real estate tax money to go up. So it's beginning to be a burdensome way of trying to fund. And so we have to start looking at, at alternatives. And I think, I think a mix, based on the first cut level of, of analysis, a mix between a earnings tax, which again is not an income tax. So it's not a W-2 income. It's a, it's a earning, or excuse me, it is W-2 income, not, not retirement type income. And this emergency levy renewal, where we have the ability to adjust it up and down as needed, which are related to the, the tax values. And getting it down to the point, hopefully, where the real estate tax values themselves don't need the levy, the emergency levy anymore. And getting a balance between those two will work. Because we're talking about balancing between two different types of citizens, right? You've got income earners who may or may not own property. So property tax doesn't really help. And then you've got property tax people who have a lot of property but don't necessarily have the, the children in the school that are needed in order to be supporting the schools. So we, we have a very strange, over our hundred square miles, we have a very strange demographic that we're trying to respond to. So I think the, the multiple ways of try to do funding. And if they eliminate in Columbus, they eliminate the real estate tax altogether, who knows what they'll come up with next?
So the district's rapidly growing, rapid growth has filled many buildings. Borrowing capacity is currently restricted. How would you approach planning for space and facilities under these constraints?
Okay. Well, we do have Mainville still. That's one of the buildings that we still own. And when space gets to the point where we have to reopen that building, we will. It will cost because we really will have to reconstruct some of the things that hasn't been taken. It's been taken care of though because we have tenants in there. And, and we also have our maintenance in there. So I think that's one of the first steps that we would do. We would open Mainville. After that, we would have to look at the space and, and see what we have. You know, when we had this problem before, we, we had kids in, in, well, we had them in trailers, yes. But we also had, we took spaces that were like gym locker rooms and took the locker stuff out and put kids in there. Because I remember walking in one of these rooms, there were no windows. And it's not the best thing in the world. But we did what we had to do. And we will do what we have to do if, if we, if it comes to that. We don't want that. We, we want a, a partnership between you guys and us, the community and us, and help us find what we need to do. That's, that's what we want. We want a community to help us find out what we can do and we can let you know what we can't do by the state rules.
I think in some corners, there's a perception that the school district does this to the community. You know, they decide that they want new buildings. They decide that they want to expand this. They decide that they want to do this. And there's really not a lot of involvement. And, and so I certainly think Bobby's point about trying to make sure that we're involved in a partnership to figure out how we address the growth, the growth issue, I think is very important. I think the point of recognizing that at some point, an additional building of some kind is probably going to be required, whether that's two years from now, five years from now, ten years from now. At some point, I think that is a reality. Now, that comes with all of the exciting things that we have to deal with, with new buildings. You got to have the land. You got to have enough land. You have to have the finances. Hopefully, we can get the state that has a program that they would provide a, a major portion of the funding for building a new school if we build it according to their specifications, which is always kind of like, okay. But, and at some point, there'll be, there'll probably be a bond issue associated with doing that. Because the, the growth, I mean, we, we only have so many closets and we can't keep converting closets to classrooms. And so at some point, there's probably going to be a building in the future. And I know on the business advisory council, we pride ourselves in, in thinking out into the future and saying, what might it look like? I, I know there's been discussions only from the standpoint of like, good grief, where is there property that we could possibly buy to be able to go do this? Because everything's going to houses. So, you know, what's available? Where could we possibly go? So at some point, I think, in, in addition to doing the little things that have to be done to make the space we have work better or more efficiently, we also have to look at the long-term issue of an additional building at some point.
All right. Are we taking more from them or from?
Just a couple more from us.
Okay.
Recent board meetings have highlighted the importance of decorum and respectful dialogue. What role should board members play in setting the tone for civil and productive discussions?
Oh, that's a killer. Board members should be respectful of each other. It doesn't always happen. I've been on this, I've been on the board for a long time. And, and in the last two years is the only time that we've had problems with disrespect. So I, if you, if you look at the boards that I've been on, we've never had a problem before, except for two years ago. So I, I, I've always been able to agree to disagree. And that's what we should do, but we don't always do that. And, and we've, I've never had an outburst like we had the last time. I'll be honest. It shocked me so much that I didn't react right away. And that was my problem. But we did. We asked a person to leave and they were escorted out. It's the first time ever in my twenty-eight years that that's ever happened. So it's, you know, I, the tempers are running high. It's, it's just, it's just unreal what's, how boards are right now and how, how some of our community is. I just, I'm just astonished at that. And again, you know, we need to be able to agree to disagree and do it, you know, well. And that's all I've got to say about that.
I think we should always expect in our elected people the highest degree of performance of decorum and respect. And so, you know, I think the role of the board is to be the example. How, what's the expression that says, the, within, within a company environment, you can always look to the, to the leadership of the company and you can determine, you know, you can measure how they're managing by looking at how the people treat each other and behave. So, you know, I think the role of the board is to set that example and to, and as Bobby said, it's unfortunate, it hasn't necessarily been what we all would have liked it to be in the community. But I think we need to get there.
So how would you promote open communication and trust between the board, families and the broader community?
I think we've kind of talked about that. I think being, being present, listening, you know, answering questions. I get, I get emails all the time and I always try to answer them to the best of my ability. And I, I think that being honest, being ethical, doing what you're supposed to be doing as a board member. I, community forums, we're having town hall meetings now. I think that's a big step. I love that. I'm, I didn't get to go to the first one, but I, I'm signed up to go to the second one, which is coming up in October, I think the twenty-third.
It's this Thursday.
This Thursday? So that's one of the things that, that I think is a step forward for us to get, you know, build trust with the community. You know, people can email me and ask me, you know, questions. There's, there's no, you know, I'm part of the community. So I've lived here for a long time. So, you know, I, I just feel like, you know, I'm available. So, you know, if you want to ask questions of me, ask questions.
I'm certainly available anytime. I mean, I'll chat with anybody. Call me up and say, come over to my house and have a cup of coffee. I'll come over and we'll chat about whatever it is you need, need to do. If you want to come to my house, you can do that as well. My phone number is, is public information. The email is public information. More than happy to be available to people in any, any way, shape or form. The other idea that I think is worth looking into is perhaps a, a school board, what do they call those things? The podcast. Just having a, having a, you know, once every month or once every couple of weeks, just have, you know, one of the school board members could possibly host a podcast and bring people in from the community or from business or from, from the developers that are building all these houses and, and talk to them about, you know, their plans and the impacts, you know? And, you know, and I, something, and, and our friends over here at ICRC, XTV, are more than happy to host our podcasting. Sorry if I got that abbreviation. There's a lot of Cs and Is in there and I get them mixed up. But, but they've got a, a studio that we can use and we can put together something. And so I, I think there's, there's ways, again, it comes back to this issue that says, if, if we do decide that we have to do something with the budget, if we do decide we have to do something with buildings, if we do decide we have to do something, we need to find a way to make sure that it's, it's something that you all are understanding is being done. And it's being done because it's something that you endorse, not something is being done to you. And that's what we have to try to figure out a way to do. And I think perhaps a podcast might help with that.
And we need your input. I mean, we want to hear from you, just as much as you want to talk to us. I, I think we need to hear from the community. I mean, things are getting hard out there. Everybody's struggling with groceries. Everybody's struggling with paying bills. And then we want to hear from you, what you want, what ideas that you think that we could do. Sorry.
Yeah. What she said.
What does student success mean to you? And how would you measure it beyond test scores and take into consideration the needs of all the students?
All right, so we have, we have gifted kids. We have kids that struggle and we have kids in the middle. I want to see all of them thrive. I want to see, we have teachers that have been trained to work with the slower kids. We've got, we've got teachers trained to work with gifted. We have teachers trained to do all these things. To me, a student's success is when a child goes from preschool all the way through our school and graduates and either has a job, knows what he's going to do, is going to be a cit, we want to get them to be good citizens, have a job, be contributing. Whether they go to college, whether they go to a trade school. We want to see our kids do well out, as they grow up. I, you know, since I've been on, running for this, I've had kids that are, are on social media with me that I haven't seen in twenty years and they're connecting with me. And I, and I keep thinking, you know, hey, I did okay with these kids. They're, they're, they're good citizens. They've got good jobs and, and they still, they want to connect with me. That to me is a, that's a plus. You know, if kids can go out from this school, get a job, be a contributing member of society, that's what I think is a sign of success of a school district.
I, I think as, as parents, each one of you get to decide what success looks like for your children. For our family, my objective as a parent was raise them to the point where they can For our family, my objective as a parent was raise them to the point where they can leave home as quickly as possible and buy them a set of suitcases for graduation. But that's just my vision. Other people would have a vision that says, I don't want them to leave home until they're 35.
No.
Well, maybe, I don't know.
No.
There you go. But the, the point is that success in each one of those cases looks very different. And I think the role of the school is to try to listen to parents, understand what the needs are, and to try to do what's necessary to prepare them so that you can feel like you've had a partner in raising your children the way you want your children to be raised. So for me, I needed to have my children know enough about things so that when I kicked them out the door, I'm obviously being facetious, but when I sent them on their way, that I knew that they could at least balance a checkbook. So there are different needs that we all have based on the way we want to have our children be raised. So the other, the other side of this same coin is that we also are doing it based on our perception of what social structure looks like. Because there are some people that are living in our communities now that have a very different sense of social structure. And we have to also be able to be sensitive to understanding and hearing what their needs are, if they're coming from other countries, if they're coming from other backgrounds, from other religions. We're going to have to be able to be sensitive to them to make sure that we can also assist in preparing those children so that their parents can say that they've done a good job raising their children and being successful. So it's kind of a long answer, but I think it makes sense.
Absolutely. So what do you love most about the Little Miami community, and what inspires you to serve our schools?
All right, and I, I don't want sympathy for this, but I still had kids in school, and my husband passed away, he just, unexpectedly. And so this community and this school system wrapped their arms around me and my family, and helped us through this thing, and not only just with love and, and support, but donated money. My husband had no life insurance, so it was, it was a traumatic experience. I had one in junior high and one in high school, and it was like I was a single mom, and I'd never been a single mom, so I had to be the mom and the dad. This community and this school system showed me what it was like to have love and, and community, and I loved it. And I promised myself that I would give back, and this is my way of giving back, is serving on this board. I give back. So, and, and I don't want sympathy, I don't, I didn't say this for, for anybody to feel sorry for me, I just want you to know that I, I supported my family, but I did it with the love of community and this school. Thank you.
And I, my perception of the community is very similar. I have yet to see any occasion where a need has propped up within the community, and there weren't people willing to rally behind whatever that need was, whether it was the, the children with cancer, or whether it's the supporting events that are occurring, sporting events, or it's supporting academic events, or other kinds of activities. The community has done a great job rallying behind whatever it is that the need is that's out there, and when it's known and when it's expressed, this is a great community. And that's, I mean, we've, we've loved living here the entire time, and, and enjoyed working, I know Carrie's enjoyed working in the schools and learning all the families, and, and we still have to this day, we'll be wandering through Walgreens, and there will be somebody there that Carrie knew that she taught, and, and it's still considered family, it's still considered part of the community, and, and that's what we love about it, and that's what, the excitement about being able to support and, and extend that love back to everybody in the community is, is a great opportunity. So we're, we're excited about that.
Thank you. We're going to take a real quick break, get all the audience questions put together, and we'll reconvene in a second.
Yeah, we'll take about a five-minute break. The candidates have been talking nonstop for about an hour and a half, just to let them maybe take a bathroom break if they need to, let you take a bathroom break if you need to, refill their water perhaps, stretch your legs, and we'll reconvene in about five minutes. We did have about 12 questions submitted. Given the hour, we're going to ask a few of those, but the good information that we have to share with you is that both candidates have agreed to stay beyond the scheduled panel time to answer any individual questions that you may have one-on-one. Again, assuming that we're all going to continue having the lovely calm discord we've had so far today. We'll have Sergeant Wall here to stay a little longer if we need to, we paid for four hours, so. He's got, he can stay for up to four, I'm not paying anymore. Hopefully, that's the best money I've wasted ever. Anyway, thank you guys so much for your patience and your attention to the candidates and the issues. I'll give it back over to our moderators here, they'll ask a few more questions, and then we'll let the candidates mill about the room and answer your individual questions with any time they may have left.
How will you set up educators for success?
How do I, how will we set up educators for success?
Yes.
Well, I think we, again, pay good salaries, that's one of the things that we want to do. But I think backing them with, if they have ideas that they want to try, I think having, again, notes to them saying, you know, hey, good job, or I think giving good professional development is very, very important for our teachers, and we, we have good professional development for them. And you know, teachers have to go to professional development to renew their certificates, or their license, I call it certificates, license. So by giving them good professional development, that helps them be more successful. I think that's what I would do.
One of the things I learned over the years is that many times, teachers have to do things that are for a requirement, but they aren't necessarily directly relatable or helpful in the classroom. So some of those, we can't really do anything about, they might be mandated by state requirements of some sort, or license requirements, or what have you, and so they need to be done. In those particular instances, we need to find a way to support them in doing that, because it's not their fault that they have to do that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they have to sacrifice time with their family, or sacrifice time at home, or in order to be able to accomplish that requirement. So we need to support them or back them in some way so that they can complete those things that need to be done in a, in a timely manner. The other thing is, if, if you're sitting in the front of a auto repair store, and you're taking in the cars that come in, and the cars that come in, they'll say, I need to get this fixed, I need to get that fixed, and you make the scheduled appointment, are you the best to determine what kind of tools the mechanic needs to be able to do that job? Probably not. So it needs to be, we need to find the tools that the teachers actually need, and they actually are very aware of what the tools are. The teachers know what will work, and they know the tools, they know what the new technologies are, they know what the new ideas are, and they also know the ideas that don't work, because they tried that 10 years ago, and it didn't work then, and it's not going to work this time around either. So I think the idea of trying to respond to what teachers really understand, the need for tools to be the correct tools, and, and back them for, for, for what they need, I think would be the best support for them.
What do you think is the biggest misconception about the role of the school board?
The biggest conception is that we have a lot of power, and that the biggest misconception is that we should be able to go into the classroom and tell the teacher what to do and what not to do. That is not our job. The fact that we can go in, the biggest misconception is that we can go into a building any time we want to. We, as school board members, again, work with policy and work with the superintendent treasurer, we also support the teachers in many ways, but not, we are not the, the Little Miami police going in there and saying, you can do this and you can do that. That's not our role. When we have a board meeting, that's our business meeting, that's what we are, we're doing our business there. We do let community speak, which we don't have to, it says in, in there, we don't have to have any community speak at all, but we want to hear from the community. So board members, we have a special thing that we are supposed to do, and there are things that we are not supposed to do.
I would say the biggest misconception is, it's kind of like Bobby's, which is the perception that somehow we run the schools.
We don't.
We, we don't. The board does not run the schools. As she said, you know, we establish policies and we hire people to, to run the schools. So it's, it's at least one layer removed from actual implementation of anything that's an actual step-by-step procedure that you may have. In the, in the world of business operations, you have policies which are overarching things, which are conceptual ideas that you want to accomplish as an overall organizational objective. Below policies, you have procedures, and procedures are the things that you write to be how you're going to implement the policies. The procedures are where the rubber hits the road and you actually have to do things, because they're the ones that'll tell you, you have to wear, you know, you have to wear white shirts on these days, and you have to wear ties on these days, and those are procedures. We don't have anything to do with procedures. We're only setting the policy at the high level, and it's up to the administrators, but that's why we're involved in hiring and managing the senior administrator, because we want them to have, to create the procedures that are needed in order to implement things. So we don't run the schools, in spite of what people might think we actually would do.
What are your thoughts on banning books?
I'm sorry?
What are your thoughts on banning books?
I'm against banning books. You know, you can go to a public library, and, and you can read anything that's in that library. I'm against having, in our curriculum, having any sexual orientation or anything like that, but I'm against banning books. You know, you can, we've got a section where parents have to sign off, yes, my kid can take out this book. That's how we handle that. I, I just read something today about children should read everything in a library. So, you know, you're not going to change a child's orientation by looking at a, by looking at a sticker, or looking at a flag, or looking at anything like that. Not that, you know, personal, my personal opinion has nothing to do with this. So I, I, I'm against banning books. I don't think certain books should be in a school library, and I don't think it should be in the curriculum, but I, I'm, banning books is like, whenever I think about that, I think about Hitler. That's what started, you know, all that. They burn books, that's scary. So, no, I, I'm against banning books.
As a matter of principle, I would be against banning books as well. I think, I, I agree that there are some books that have little to no educational value, and perhaps shouldn't be in a school library, because they don't have an educational value. That's a very difficult judgment to make. So automatically saying no to something should be taken very seriously if it's not to be included in a library. To be absolutely brutal, the role for determining what your children read is with you as parents.
I agree.
Not with the schools. And it doesn't mean that you get the option, if, if a majority of you show up with pitchforks and decide that a particular book needs to be no longer taught in a particular thing, that you necessarily have the right to influence that as a community. That might be taking our community involvement a little too far. But hearing from parents and knowing from parents exactly what it is they approve of or disapprove of, or like or don't like, or whatever redeeming values they find, is a very important thing for us to know as a school board. But at the end of the day, just like we don't set procedures, we're, we're here to support the parents. It's a partnership with the parents to determine what the parents want to do for their children. But banning books as a matter of course, for some reason, I, I mean, I, I don't even sure I can even imagine what the reason might be to be able to say we want to ban a book. Yes, okay, I can see some that are offensive, they're not my particular taste, doesn't mean they're not somebody else's taste, it doesn't, and just because I don't find any redeeming value in it, you know, it's, it's a, that's a very slippery slope.
You've both stressed the importance of a board being able to predict future trends, but have also stressed that it is important to realize that it is difficult to predict the future of technology, government changes, AI, and the like. Why do you feel like you are the best person to address this disconnect?
That's a good question. I'm, read the last part again.
Why do you feel that you're the best person to address this disconnect?
Well, the disconnect is there. We can't, you know, we can't predict what AI is going to do, we can't predict what the government's going to do. I mean, they've messed with us the whole time, so I don't know, I don't know how to, I really don't know how to answer that question. I, I feel like I would do the best I could do handling that, but I, I think that's, that's a hard one. I, I really, I don't have an answer for that. I would like to hear our other two people that didn't show up to answer that.
I, I think the experience that I have in the business world, you have to be prepared in the business world to handle unknowns and events that occur. The other day, for example, did you all know that something happened with the big web servers that were managing a bunch of stuff, and a whole bunch of stuff got shut down? Now, that's a good example of something that could not be predicted. How individual companies handle that will determine whether they're in business in the future. Because if they didn't handle it well, they're, by the sheer nature of the way business works, they'll be out of business, because they can't handle those kinds of things. I think when you look at events that have occurred in the past, certainly in my business world, all the companies I've worked for have been very successful businesses, and we didn't go out of business when strange things... things happened, or unpredictable things happened. We ended up flexing and responding and fixing those problems as they occurred, and some of them were unpredictable. I think as a community, what I think the board has done quite well is, as things have occurred, the board has been amazingly flexible in the past, trying to figure out what should they do with that. And sometimes it's talking to a lawyer, sometimes it's talking to other school districts to see how they've done things. But in spite of all of the evolving changes, COVID, I mean, how was that predicted? That was not something that anybody knew was going to happen. And the flexibility to be able to figure out a way to rapidly deploy remote learning, and rapidly deploy as best we could possibly do that. And I think those are the kinds of things, experience itself will prove whether or not the response to unknowns is actually something that's, that we're capable of responding to.
Good answer.
Alternative funding is probably a necessity. Would it be possible to have someone run the numbers, for example? Most people have much higher property values than income. What would a one-half percent or 1% tax on income look like compared to property tax?
We have run that before, when we were, when we were under state control. We've tried to pass an earnings tax before. And I kind of disagree somewhat with that, because I had a man come to me when we were talking about an earnings tax. And he said, I have always supported the schools and the levies. But he said, you put an earnings tax on there, and I will vote no. So, I think if we could put an earnings tax on and lower our millage on the levy that we have now, it would kind of balance it out. But an earnings tax, our levy right now never grows. We get 10 points, would you say?
10.6 million.
10.6 million. That never changes. And so, but if we had an earnings tax, we lowered the millage on the levy, and we have an earnings tax, it grows. I mean, you get a raise, your earnings tax will go up a little bit. So, that would grow. So, just like I said before, Goshaun did an income tax. That's different. Income tax taxes everything. It taxes retirement. It taxes everything. An earnings tax only taxes people that are earning money. Like, if you're retired, it does not tax your retirement. So, Goshaun has never had to come back. So, if we would do an earnings tax, lower the value of the property tax by a percent, by a millage, so much millage, even though it might bring in for a while the same amount, the earnings tax would go up. Every time somebody got a raise, it would go up a little bit. And so, it would keep growing, and therefore, then eventually, maybe we could, again, lower the millage again on that levy. So, to me, that's a plus. I think that would be something that I would, I would love to see. So...
Yeah. One of the things the Business Advisory Council does is runs those kinds of scenarios on a regular basis to try to figure out what options there might be there. And I believe it's not premature to talk a little bit about the fact that there's an estimate out there that something like maybe a percent of income, or a percent and a half of earnings tax might be needed in order to totally replace the tax levy if it doesn't pass, something like that. That's kind of a scenario that we've run. It's not, it's not been very formalized or finalized yet. So, don't go running off with that number and start doing calculations. But we do that in the Business Advisory Council quite regularly. One of the interesting things that we don't often talk about is the fact that within the state of Ohio, there's, and I'll try not to be too technical about it, because I'll get lost. We have what's called a 20 mil floor for funding, which means that no matter what we're getting from real estate taxes, it always gets adjusted up to 20 mils for everybody. So, if for some reason our real estate taxes are only gathering 18 mil, then it automatically adds more tax to everybody until we get to that 20 mil floor. Because we're one of those places that even with our real estate tax, we don't generate enough to reach a 20 mil level based on real estate values. So, there's a set amount that's income tax at the moment, because that's all the state has. And that's what they've, that's what they're forcing on us. If we get to a point where they eliminate sales, or excuse me, real estate tax, and they don't replace it with something, then who knows, I mean, that's, all bets are off at that point, I mean, in terms of...
There is no plan. There is no plan out there.
That'll be a mess.
What's your stance on school choice that continues to come up within legislators?
So, you're talking about vouchers, I think?
Yep.
All right. This is my, this is my, how I feel. When vouchers started, they were for students who were in an underperforming school. And I was, I thought that was great. You know, if that school is not providing an education for these kids, then yes, a voucher would be good. If, if a school that takes a voucher, let's say, let's say Johnny here wants to go to a private school, and his parents get this voucher, if they take that voucher to that school, if they follow the same rigorous standards that we as a public school have to follow, if they take that voucher, then I'm okay with that. But I am not okay with them just giving a voucher to a student, and they're going to a private school, or to a religious school, because religious schools are taking those vouchers now. And there is no accountability on how they are spending that money that they get from the voucher. I just have a problem with that. I think some of the schools have some accountability, but they don't have anything like we have. They don't have the testing that we have. Right now, I work for a private school, because I'm an educational consultant, and there's a lot of different rules that we have here that they don't have to follow. So, I, if, if, if parents want to send their kids, children to private school, and they don't have to follow the rules, that's fine. That's great. But if they take our taxpayer money and go to a school, and they don't have to follow the same rules that we have to, that's wrong. I think that's wrong. So, that's how I feel about vouchers and your question.
I think vouchers, as a matter of principle, on the surface, really have, I don't really have any issues with. But unfortunately, the system has not been implemented fairly, and has not been implemented in a way that works. Number one, if we take, if we have a classroom of 25 students, and one student decides they want to go to a different school, and they take a voucher and go out, part of that money for that 25th student is also helping to defray the costs associated with that classroom. So, all of a sudden, we as a public school are stuck with still a classroom for 25, and the same costs and the same overhead, and we have one less student's money coming in in order to try to contribute that. So, in a way, we punish the public school systems. By the way, the voucher system is being managed at the moment. We're punishing the public school systems by offering these vouchers to go out. The other thing that's happening is, if the vouchers are done for legitimate reasons, and we don't really know what the reasons are at the moment, and again, that's where, because it's been managed poorly, some people are using vouchers to offset their personal cost, when they would be buying, they would be paying for the private school themselves anyway. And they said, well, I got free money. I'll just go get some from the school. And of course, that takes money out of the school, which punishes the public schools. And those people would probably be paying for the private schools, whether they got a voucher or not. And so, again, I think the system itself hasn't worked very well. And consequently, as it presently is constituted, I think it needs to be completely adjusted and changed. But as a matter of principle, I think vouchers could be a good thing, but not the way they're being done at the moment.
Okay. I'm going to do one more here, and then, like we said, we'll open up the floor for after-session, I guess. So, last question here. We've got, while researching this election, I saw a Facebook post stating that two candidates did not respond to the forum invitation. Someone else eventually answered on their behalf. The question is, are either of you accountable to any organization or individual who may speak for you publicly or influence your decisions? If so, and why?
No. I've, I have no affiliation with any other organization. No one is going to speak for me. I have to speak for myself.
That's true, by the way.
Thank you. And I just, I've paid for everything myself. I really, I don't answer to anybody but me and my conscience. All right?
The short answer for me is also no. Not affiliated with any, any particular group. One of the, one of the things that is happening, which should be happening, is different groups are choosing to support us. But support is what we're trying to do, because we're trying to represent folks in a way that you want to be represented. Now, they're not influencing, they're not involved in the campaign. They're not involved in doing anything, may not even agree politically, or emotionally, or civilly with any of the other stance they may take. But we have to be able to garner support from a wide population, because we have a wide population. And there may be accusations about being supported by certain things, and that, you know, it's not true. There's nothing out of my campaign, and I know it's true for Bobby's as well. Unfortunately, all of the ideas, good or bad, come from right here. So, you're welcome to send the criticisms to where they belong.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So, that concludes the formal question and answer portion. Our candidates will be dismissed at this point to go about the room and answer your questions individually, have one-on-one conversations. Again, we'll have Sergeant Wall here, in case anything, which I don't think will tonight, has been great, and I really appreciate all of you being here and letting us have this wonderful dialogue. But we'll just dismiss them so that you can talk one-on-one with them, and probably wrap that up in the next 20 to 30 minutes, depending on how things are going. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're not staying till midnight.
We have a cutoff for the room, but I would like, we have a lovely volunteer from the district, Mr. Underwood, who has been, kind of, he's helped us set up the room and things, and he has to come back early to work tomorrow. So, we would like him to go home as well. So, we don't want to run too late. So, maybe another 20 or 30 minutes they'll have with you in the audience to answer your questions, and then we'll dismiss. Thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you guys for coming. I mean, this is really, it's really nice. Thank you.